President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. My name is Joel Petty. I'm a remedial project manager for the Environmental Protection Agency, and I'm here to talk today about the historic pottery site and the work EPA has been doing. So just a quick agenda, we're going to go over a little bit of the background and site history, as well as the two programs that have been working on the site. We have both our removal and remedial programs. I'll explain a little bit of what each does, and then the next steps. So this photo here shows a really good depiction of what the potteries looked like. Trenton historically contained over 80 potteries. About a third of those were located in the East Trenton neighborhood, which is in the North Ward, which is the current boundaries of the site. But we do expect the site may expand. So this is a very old industry. It began in the 1850s and grew until the 1920s, until it started to decline. Lead was used extensively in the glazes, both as a colorant and a stabilizer. When the ceramics were fired, lead was released from the kilns into the air, which then settled out onto nearby properties, including residential properties. Additionally, fill was likely used to level out yards. We found evidence of pottery fill in the neighborhood as well. So these are just some more images of the potteries that had operated in Trenton. On the upper left-hand side, that would be a very old pottery from the 1850s. And then you can see with the two other potteries, how large some of these facilities were, how many kilns that they had, how many smoke stacks that they had. So a quick site history, and I'll try to keep it brief. There's a lot of history. In 2018, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection had referred a very small solder manufacturer. This was known, called the L. H. Mitchell facility, and it was located on Clag Avenue in East Trenton. So EPA investigated that, and what we found was residential properties with high levels of lead contamination. In 2019, we also determined that the source of the lead contamination was not from the small solder facility that was there. So under Superfund law, we can only take action from an identified industrial source. There's other sources of lead that our program cannot take action on, such as lead-based paint or lead from gasoline use. So we began to look at other possible sources, and we discovered that there were numerous potteries in the area. In 2020, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection referred the historic potteries to EPA. So that allowed us to begin what we called an attribution study. We were looking for the source of the lead contamination, and whether it was the potteries or potentially something else. That investigation lasted a few years, but in 2023, we did determine that these potteries were a major source of the lead contamination. So from late 2023 to early 2024, we had an integrated assessment. That's both of the programs in the Superfund program, removal and remedial, started an investigation together to determine if the site would be eligible for removal actions from the removal program, and whether it could be proposed to the National Priorities List, or NPL, and that would be the remedial program. It was determined to be eligible for both, and I will go over those programs on the next slides. So throughout 2024 and 2025, the removal program has been installing temporary covers and raised garden beds at our high-risk properties where elevated lead was found. So high-risk properties include parks, schools, and residential properties with either a pregnant woman, children under seven, or active gardening. In July 2025, the site was listed on the National Priorities List. What this listing will allow is a long-term response from EPA to permanently address the lead contamination. And then removal and remedial activities are ongoing. So as I said, we have two subprograms within Superfund that address, study and address polluted sites. Our removal program is for short-term responses, and they mitigate very high threats to people's health and the environment. While the remedial program works on more complex sites needing long-term response, and those have to be placed on the National Priorities List. So the NPL is the list of sites of the highest priority among the known releases of hazardous substances throughout the United States. And for sites in the remedial program, we often employ the removal program. We work collaboratively together. Removal actions can last days to several years, while remedial actions involve years of study and cleanup to achieve a full cleanup. So the removal program has been actively working in East Trenton since 2018. We performed extensive outreach and public education in the community. More than 160 residential properties have been sampled to date, and what we found is almost all of the properties have elevated levels of lead. The removal program has been installing these temporary covers on our highest-risk properties. So once again, those high-risk properties are properties with elevated levels of lead, where either a pregnant woman, children under seven, or a active gardening is occurring. The two photos here just show some examples of the covers that we implement. Residents have a choice of whether they'd like stone, mulch, or grass. These are temporary. They are not considered to be protective for a very long term. There's about six inches of clean material that's placed on top of the contaminated material. This is just a temporary fix until the remedial program is able to do a more permanent solution. So we've installed temporary covers at one school, Grant Intermediate, two parks, Sunny Marine and Brunick Avenue, and 43 residential properties, all within East Trenton. We've also installed raised garden beds at 17 residential properties. So this slide shows our remedial process. This is the process that you're going to see going on in the city for many years. Portions of the historic pottery site are currently in what we call the site characterization stage, also known as a remedial investigation and feasibility study. This includes operable units one and two, which include all of the residential soils that may have been impacted. I'll explain more about operable units on the next slide. So the remedial investigation feasibility study, which we also call the RIFS, it's an assessment to characterize the site, determine risk, and evaluate potential remedial actions. Following the RIFS, a proposed plan is put out for public comment. So the public, any community member or any organization, has the ability to comment on what our plans are for the overall cleanup. Once we receive all the public comments, we consider them, and after they're addressed, we issue what's called a Record of Decision, or a ROD, and that's the official document detailing the remedial action. So then that's followed by a remedial design, which is prepared by an engineer, and then the ROD and the remedial design are then implemented during a remedial action. Remedial actions will occur over time, and they will begin in East Trenton. The remedial process is quite lengthy, takes many years to complete, especially if we find widespread contamination. Removal actions can occur at any time during this process, and community involvement occurs throughout the process. Temporary actions at high-risk properties will continue throughout the remedial process until we're able to implement that remedial action. So the operable units. The remedial program uses operable units, or we call them OUs. They're to divide the site into distinct and manageable portions. The units can be defined based on geographic areas, specific problems, or the type of contamination that's found. So right now, we've broken the historic pottery site into four operable units. Operable Unit One will be the East Trenton neighborhood, the residential soils. That will include parks, schools, and any other public properties that children may be accessing. Operable Unit Two will be any other residential areas in the city that we find, that we find were impacted. The reason we've separated the two is because we've collected so much data in East Trenton that we can move through that investigation much quicker and get into the remedial action. We have not started sampling around the entire city yet. That will begin in 2026, and we expect that the site may expand at that point. And that will be all under Operable Unit Two. And then Operable Unit Three and Four, they're not too important for today. They're not going to occur for a long period of time, because the residential properties are going to be EPA's priority. But OU Three will consist of where the former pottery is operated, and then OU Four would be any other media that we may investigate: sediment in creeks, groundwater, surface water, things along those lines. So these are our next steps. For the rest of 2025, we're going to continue that site characterization for OUs One and OU Two. OU Two, we have not started sampling yet, but we are in the remedial investigation. We're going to conduct soil sampling to establish a background value for lead. That's occurring later this month. We're actually collecting samples from properties within the city, as well as surrounding municipalities. This is because we have to determine what the background level for lead would have been had the potteries not operated. Also, under Superfund, we are unable to clean up below what's the established background level. We'll continue outreach and soil sampling activities in East Trenton, and we'll continue implementing those temporary actions as additional properties are identified. Throughout next year, we're going to continue those actions, those interim actions or temporary actions. We're going to complete the site characterization for OU One, and we're going to start investigating the other areas of Trenton where the pottery is operated, and we'll establish that background value for lead. And then what's further out with some potential for the proposed plan coming in the latter half of 2026, but that's not certain at this point, so I put it under "further out." But the next step would be to issue the proposed plan with that public comment period, and then we would issue the Record of Decision to select the cleanup plan for East Trenton, and we'll begin the remedial design and the remedial actions in East Trenton. We'll complete the characterizations of OU Two, and begin those characterizations for OU Three and OU Four. And community involvement will continue during all of these activities. So that's my presentation. This page here has the site team, all of our emails and phone numbers. I'm Joel Petty. I'm listed at the top there. And also on the bottom, that is our website. It contains all of our documents to date, as well as just general information about the site. Also, I hope everybody received a handout. It's a community update. We distribute this throughout the community. It also contains an infographic that has ways a family can protect themselves from lead exposure. The community update and infographic is also available in the back in both English and Spanish, so if any community members want to pick that up, it's right there. We also have a field office located at 461 Brunswick Avenue. So I'm usually there on the weekdays. Anybody can come in and talk to me, or you could email, and email or call me, and we could set up a time to meet if you have further questions. So I'll open it up if the council has any questions now.
So first, thank you so much for all of that information in the timeline. One, are we able to get a copy of this presentation? If you can email it to council?
Yes.
Great, thanks. And then I'm going to open it up the floor to council, but I did have one question. I know you said that it's going to be over a couple of years that this project is going to be going on in the remedial process. How long does it kind of take for the amount of houses that you've already, or the amount of locations you've already identified? Is that like a five-year process, 10 years, or what has been?
So for East Trenton, we imagine it would be at least 10 years until we would have that completely cleaned up. It's hard to determine what the timeline for the rest of the city would be, because we don't know what areas may have.
So just for one area, it's going to be about 10 years?
Yes, but we may be able to start implementing, like, multiple neighborhoods at the same time.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you for your presentation and update. It was a lot and a little bit of time, but it's really important that we hear. So I do have some questions. One is, what goals, I guess, did you guys set out, if you did, for the number of residential sampling sites that you wanted to sample from, and then where do we stand with that goal? Because I did say that you're going to continue doing outreach, which is great, because I know, and my follow-up question, I have another question. But as far as where do we stand with what the goal is, and how many more sites do you want to have completed?
Sure. So the goal would eventually be to sample all of the properties in East Trenton. We do need some sort of data to be able to implement that remedial action. We've sampled about 160 properties. We have, we know that there's about 700 occupied properties in East Trenton. There's also a lot of vacant properties. Those will be addressed as well.
And there's no time limit on the sampling dates?
No. So right now, we have our removal program that can sample, and then that will eventually move into our remedial program that can sample. So the removal program right now is looking for high-risk properties. It would be those properties with small children, or where they're actively gardening. The next steps that they're working on now are getting back in touch with landlords that own multiple properties. There's an extra layer when a property is owned by a landlord. We do need to have access agreed upon by the owner of the property.
Are landlords particularly being problematic? Not every single one would be, I would think, but in general, does that seem to be a bugaboo?
It definitely could be a problem. Some landlords are very hesitant. The last time we had reached out to some of these landlords was before the site was listed on the NPL, so we couldn't really give them a clear picture of what EPA would do. We have a lot more information now about how we're going to move through this process. So as we get in touch with these landlords in the coming months, we do anticipate that more will be brought on board. And then we also do have enforcement authority under EPA if they're uncooperative.
Thank you. That's why I was wondering if they're federally required to respond to this and allow access. Okay. What would be, is there a penalty involved if they do not, or they continue to be difficult?
So not, I guess I can't speak too much to exactly what would come of it, because that would be considered, like, enforcement-sensitive. But I can say that a property owner can become responsible for contamination if they don't allow EPA to address it.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. So a couple more questions. I know initially, when we were trying to get everyone to do the thumb prick, and then do the follow-up for testing, it was more, unfortunately, difficult with folks in maybe, we'll say, just say, the Spanish-speaking community, because maybe some suspicion of letting a government person near them, or just being tested and information being exchanged. Has that gotten any easier? I know with ICE and different things happening, that's created a lot of difficulties in other areas. And if so, is there anything more maybe the city could do to help liaison for that, to get more people tested and more properties tested?
Yeah. So what EPA does is, we always recommend that parents have their children tested. So if we identify that there are young children at the property, that would be the next step for the family. We don't actually do any of the testing. That would be the Health Department. More, you know, we're not a health agency. It's more the environmental side. So we have worked very closely with the Health Department. They've had-
Yeah, they've done a lot. They've done a great job.
Right. They've, yeah, multiple events throughout the city, where they've offered the testing. We do hand out information on where they can get tested, but we don't ask them that, you know, it's a HIPAA violation if we were asking them too much about that.
Okay. And then as far as with the funding, because there's a lot of concerns, folks have it. I know you'll be very limited, and we totally respect that, because you're our federal employee. As far as the funding for this project, my understanding, because of the Superfund designation, that funding is guaranteed and cannot be taken away by change of an administration or new policymaking. Is that correct?
So now that the site's listed, it cannot just be unlisted unless we address the contamination. As far as how the funding works, that is dependent on each year, how much funding the agency receives. So that can change over time. I will say that residential lead is very important to our current administration, as well as it was very important to our last administration. So we do expect the work to continue moving forward.
Okay. I think that's all my questions, except for just one general one. As far as, I know it probably could take 10 years, et cetera, but the more common space areas like the parks, schools, et cetera, those are prioritized to be cleaned up first, I think from your original presentation.
Yes, that's correct. So when we identify a neighborhood, we will, and we think it has high levels of lead, we're going to then go in and sample those parks and schools. That would be the first step in that, in a neighborhood. For the property, for the parks and schools that have received the temporary covers, they may actually come more toward the bottom of the list for the full remediation, because they already have that temporary cover, and will want to address areas that don't have any protection first.
Okay. And actually, I do, I apologize, one last question. Some of the abandoned factories, more towards North Olden, would they be tested, like, what stage would they be tested if they haven't been operable, used in decades?
Right. So that would all fall under Operable Unit Three, which we don't really have a timeline yet. It really depends on how much contamination we find in other neighborhoods, if we find, you know, if we find any. So the, a lot of the properties in East Trenton are brownfields properties, and there is a big redevelopment plan for the brownfields program. So that's going to continue. So Superfund and brownfields don't work. They can't work together. They can't receive funding from both, Superfund and brownfields. So those, the places that are designated brownfields are still being kept under the brownfields program, but we will definitely investigate any former potteries that are not considered a brownfield site.
So being a brownfield designation doesn't preclude your involvement with EPA?
It, well, so the brownfields program's also, under EPA, it's EPA and state managed.
Yeah, but I just meant two segments of EPA.
Right, two different sections. And if a program receives, if a place, a facility or site receives money from the Superfund program, it is no longer eligible for brownfields program. So that's what we want to, we want to make sure that that redevelopment plan continues.
Not paying twice for the same.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much, and I hope to see you again at council for another update. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, and thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Thanks.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Madam President, I believe at this time, you have an update from the Lafayette Hotel?
Yes.
Good.
We have our attorney, Mr. Malley. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Jim Malley, Redevelopment Council for the city. Good to see you all. I'll give you a quick update this evening on your agenda. Resolution 422 relates to the Lafayette Hotel. And just to recap very quickly, we've been through a couple different processes. The latest, where you received and looked at different proposals, and have made a, and there was a consensus with the selection of a company called TetraBilt. Tonight's resolution is authorizing a memorandum of understanding that, once we agree and finalize terms on that, we'll appoint them as what's referred to as a conditional redeveloper. And what that does is simply authorize, or it authorizes negotiations with TetraBilt, the city to negotiate with TetraBilt, and that we will only negotiate with them for the next six months to work on putting together a redevelopment agreement in order to facilitate the city's purchase of the property, and then a resale to them for development of the property. The MOU also requires them to post an escrow to cover the city's costs through that negotiation, and any other due diligence we may have. There are, the city has received a grant from the New Jersey EDA to assist in the purchase of this property. We have a lot of issues to work through with the EDA, with the property transfers, not the least of which are a series of liens and other title issues that have to be resolved in order for that transfer to take place, both for the city to receive it, and then to transfer it out. So what happens from here on out is we begin working on the negotiation and finalization of the purchase agreement, the sales agreement, and a redevelopment agreement for what work will be done, what the timetables will be. Through that process, we will be working with your redevelopment committee in the first instance, and with the city administration, in order to get to terms, to resolve all this. And we're allotting a six-month period to try to get that completed. And that's basically where we are. So any questions? Happy to answer as I can.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Now, you said you're allowing six months. Doesn't mean that we will take the six months.
Right. It doesn't mean it'll take six months. It doesn't mean it'll be completed in six months. It's just we're starting out with six months.
Who wants, Council Vice President?
Thank you, CP. Good evening, Mr. Malley.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us today and obliging our request to provide updates to council and the public on this. There's been a lot of speculation and questions out there from the public about where we are on this sell of the hotel, or purchase, and then sell of the hotel. So thank you for thoroughly explaining that. So can you, without violating any type of things you can't disclose, can you talk about some of the things that may be hindering the process, that is making it drag out for so long? Because some people are under the impression that this hotel should be up and running by the 250th celebration and things of that nature. So can you talk about maybe some things that hindered that process, and like, a realistic timeline on, once we get through the purchase agreement, sales agreement and everything, the title settlement with EDA, how long it would take for them to redevelop the property?
Certainly. It's a very difficult transaction. In order for the city to purchase this from the current property owner, we don't have condemnation authority, so for an economic development purpose. So we have to reach agreement. And so when a property owner sets their terms and doesn't want to sell, it takes two to tango. In this case, and these items are public record, there is a, just less than a million dollars of a lien against the property from the DCA for fire code violations. There is six figures of tax liens on the property. There are significant title issues that I think it's fair to say the property owner would rather not have count on his side of the ledger. So that makes agreement very difficult there. We've, it was just about four or five months ago that the city secured the grant from the EDA, so that funding has just come into place. And then we had to have, the goal here is to have someone ready for us to turn it over to, not just to turn it to someone to hold on to it, but to turn it over to someone who will rehabilitate, get this property back into productive use. We've gone through a process, an open process to select that entity. That entity's now been selected, and now we get to the nitty-gritty of what's their timing for complete this? What are some benchmarks we can hold them to? What are they going to be financially responsible for? How did they handle their financing in terms of, are they asking for a pilot? Do they want this? A lot of issues to happen on that side. So I don't, personally, I think it would take some magic for this to be advanced substantially by any Fourth of July celebrations next year. We'll all work on it, but these issues are not insignificant, and we'll- and will take some, a whole lot of movement and negotiation and movement by parties to get to further this along.
So it doesn't sound like they'll even be able to close. Chances are they'll just be closing on the property by mid next year.
That would be great if we could accomplish that, yes.
Right, right.
It'd be a good thing.
And thank you for that. In terms of the pilot, they're not asking for a pilot at this moment, right?
At the moment, I don't believe they are, but my experience in the development world is, stay tuned.
Right. Stay tuned, okay. And I don't think I have any more questions. I think that we're on a good track here, and, thank you.
Thank you, CVP.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam President, I just wanted to alert you to Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes. Councilwoman, I don't know who was first. Did she have a hand for a while? We'll do, Councilwoman Frisbee move first. We'll do Frisbee.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you, Mr. Malli, for the presentation or the update, I should say. I only have one question. What happens if the developers do not meet our benchmarks?
Well, that's something that would have to be negotiated into our agreement. Typically, they would have, typically, they would have an opportunity to cure that, but it will most likely would end up in, in something that would terminate this agreement. If they don't, if they're not working on this and not making some progress with due diligence, you typically would have built into an agreement that they're no longer going to be the developer.
Okay, and that's, and that's pretty much what I wanted to establish is that we do have something, mechanism in place that say that if they don't meet what they agreed to within a certain period of time, that it is, we're not going to have to go back to the drawing board, but we actually say, okay, we already know that this is going to, XYZ is going to happen as a result of that. Okay.
That's, that's the agreement we would attempt to, to complete. And in this type of an instance, they will probably not want to close on that property to complete their purchase of it until they have approvals in place, until they're basically ready to go to start construction. So we'll, we'll see, that's all. We haven't begun that negotiation. We're actually trying to finalize terms of the MOU that you're authorizing tonight. There's still some language differences that we have that we're trying to get finalized.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Mr. Malli, I appreciate you being here and being informed as always. And one of the things I just wanted to make clear, and I know you touched upon it with my colleagues, as far as expectation for construction to even be started after closing, first person moving in to puff the sheets and plop on a bed and watch television is probably 2027, right?
That, that's, I would be, it would be a very good result if we have this up and running in 2027, yes.
And that would be normal course for something like this.
Normal course. This is a big, everything that we've discussed so far is getting them to a point, a point to begin construction, and I have to believe that this is going to be at least a year construction.
And then as far as, you know, this whole process and the legalities involved in MOU and everything that's come up to this point, I'm just curious, in your professional opinion, has this been one of the most more complicated processes or endeavors regarding a dormant hotel, if you've ever worked on that before or similar project?
Redevelopment, you know, we always joke that like, if it was easy to do, we wouldn't have a job. There wouldn't, you know, if it's easy to do, that's, that's what regular development is. This one is a little, they're all tricky in their own way. This one is tricky because we need state assistance on it. We have a property owner that controls the site. And so you never know what's going to happen when you're doing redevelopment. You have a property owner that controls the site, and then we have a lot of outside liens on the property. And then we have, you know, got to work with now a developer to get them in to rehab and to redo it. So yeah, it's, it's very complicated. This is a doctorate work in redevelopment.
Gotcha. And then last question, because I had a couple of constituents ask me about this. Regarding the parking garage that's attached to that, that's not part of this MOU or whatever agreement would be with the hotel developer. But at the same point, what changes could be legally made to the operation of the parking garage?
That, it's, that's just an open door. As we progress through this with all of these parties, I'm sure that's going to be addressed with respect to how that will contribute to the functioning of the hotel property.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg.
Thank you, CP. Hi, Mr. Malli, how are you?
Just every day's Christmas. How are you?
So I'm not sure if this is similar to or the same as what Councilwoman Frisbee asked. I know she asked about benchmarks. My question is more specific to the MOU in 180 days with regards to this resolution. What should happen if that need to be extended? Or, you know, we need to go, you know, beyond that MOU for whatever time? Is that allowable within this agreement that we have? Would we have to come back to council? Would there have to be extenuating circumstances for that? Can you just speak to that?
So if, if an MOU is going to be extended, which they are, very often that happens, they are, it needs to come back to you for your authorization. Typically, a governing body would be looking at, how have these six months gone? Are we all working on this? Are we making some progress? We have found out, you know, some other issues that we didn't know about, and it's taking time to deal with that. You would evaluate the circumstances. If, if after six months you find out that there's a developer who hasn't responded and hasn't done anything and hasn't completed any environmental, then, then you would, then you would make that decision about whether or not you want to just let the MOU expire. That's the end of that. We move on and try to find someone else to do it. But it's totally, it has to come back to you to authorize an extension, and, and it's based on what the facts are at that time and how comfortable you are that there's progress.
Okay, and I know that this resolution was revised before it came before us today and presented. Was there a reason with regard to the amount of days for the MOU? Was there a reason why 180 days is in place? Is this common practice for this type of project or?
That's, that's the number that's just, we're just choosing, really, our office kind of set it at 180, because, because of the issues that are involved in this, we think that's like a reasonable time for us to try to pull this all together. If it goes quicker, that's great. If the property owner tomorrow agrees to take a dollar and be responsible for all the liens, things can move really fast, okay? But it's, it, I think reasonably it's going to take some time, given what's happened so far, to get, get us in position to have agreements executed by everyone.
Thank you.
Madam President.
CVP.
One, just one more million-dollar question. The bond that is on the hotel that the city still has an outstanding balance on, can you go over that a little bit about what that balance is and whether that bond could be retired? What the, what the payment plan looks like?
So I can't, I can't at this point. I don't have enough information on it. We're waiting for a title report to get back to see what all there is, and then we, I need to get more internals as to what, what the exact amounts are for everything. So I'm not that far on all of the debt positions that there are on the property.
Okay, okay. Aside from the amount, is there a plan to address it?
Not, I can't speak to that at this time, okay? It will have to be addressed, okay? How, I don't have an answer for you right now, or have a proposal for you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, good question. Thank you, Mr. Malli, for taking time to be here to explain it to us. We appreciate it.
You got it, thank you.
Thanks.
On your call, Madam President.
We can continue on, Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. This time we've reached the point for a public comment for agenda items only. If I could have the clipboard for agenda items only. And to the public, public comment will be five minutes for each individual. You may address anything that you wish. Madam President, I do not have anybody listed for docket items only. We can move on if that's your will.
Yes.
All right. At this point then, I would ask if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications, petitions, and reports.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And moving on, Madam President, to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. We have ordinance 25-108, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as 22 and 24 West Ingham Avenue, 13 and 17 Trent Street, and identified on the city tax map as block 8603, lots 13, 14, 41, and 39 pursuant to NJSA 481213C to Valerie M. Arthur for the sale price of $51,000. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg.
Stain.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Abstain.
Noted. Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-131, ordinance amending chapter 132 and chapter 56 of the Code of the City of Trenton to increase the rental registration fees for residential and commercial structures. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-132, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as 9698, 9698 Hart Avenue, 332 Oakland Street, 1457 West State Street, and identified on the city tax map as block 21404, lots 8, 7, block 5501, lot 24, block 34002, lot 7, pursuant to NJSA 481213C to Hart and Redevelopment LLC for the sale price of $54,600. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg.
Abstain.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Abstain.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-133, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as 32 Taylor Street, identified on the city tax maps, block 21402, lot 12, pursuant to NJSA 40A, don't know whether it's typo, S12, 40A S1213B05 to Hashim and Shaquise Hawthorne for the sale price of $1,000. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Madam President.
CVP. Thank you. Mr. Garcia, it, it is typos. The S should be not there, and the zero after the B should be a parentheses.
My apologies, Madam Vice President, we did not pick that up. I'm sorry for that typo.
No worries. My answer is, oh wait, we didn't call roll call, sorry. I'm jumping ahead. That was it.
Thank you.
On your call, Madam President.
We already motioned a second.
Motioned a second, if there's no other discussion, I can go to roll call. Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Abstain.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-138, ordinance amending chapter 2, article 3, section 2 through 7 entitled Boards, Boards Bodies and Commissions, or section 2 dash 7, excuse me, entitled Boards Bodies and Commissions and Repealing and Replacing, Chapter 2, and that is article, excuse me, 14? Well, yeah, 14. Let's make sure. Section 71, thank you, Councilwoman. Section 71 entitled Landmark Commission for Historic Preservation and Chapter 315, Article 15 entitled Historic District Regulation for the Code of the City of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Council President.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. So I have a couple of questions. It's been brought to my attention regarding this particular board that's going to be commissioned for historic preservation, that they haven't been meeting quorum and may be in need of members. I'd like to make sure about that, if that is correct information. And also if new members are needed, how many are needed? And the fact that they're not meeting quorum, that does not help our city when making sure that we are, you know, fulfilling our regulations for historical landmarks. But also there's a question of whether they are still meeting on Zoom and not meeting in person, which I think they should be meeting in person to make that connection with the public. But also, you know, if we're having trouble getting people to commit to come into meetings and we're having quorum, perhaps having it live will make people show up. So I'd like to get some answers to those questions before we vote, if we could, from administration.
I'm sure. I don't know if that would be Mr. Beach or EA.
It's good evening, Jim Beach, Chief of Staff. I have not been attending any of the landmarks meetings. So I'm not aware, Councilwoman, whether they have or have not been meeting, and if they have not been meeting, whether it's due to a lack of quorum. I know we have been actively seeking new membership in anticipation of this commission that we're, you know, transforming into.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Beach. Do you have an idea how many new members you might need? And we put out a notice recently to request for members.
It's, I believe it's nine, and of that nine, two are alternates. So it's seven, which is the present composition of the landmarks commission, and then would be two alternates.
Okay, and do we have any vacancies currently?
I believe right now they're about five, not five vacancies, there's five members, so two vacancies.
All right. Can I request that we send out a notice pretty soon to try to recruit more? And then also, will they be able to start meeting in person?
I.
Because that's been requested by some, some constituents who've had to go through the process. And, you know, not having a meeting in person doesn't give them someone they could talk to.
We can make that request. I believe they control their own.
Yeah, it's up to what they decide.
Bylaws and procedures.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I think we're ready for roll call.
Certainly. Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, I believe that brings us to resolutions. At this time, are there any items that you or the rest of the council would like to extract for questions or from a possible consent agenda this evening?
Okay, Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg. Yes, 25407, 412.
407?
407, 412, and 139.
Thank you, 412 and 139.
Council President.
139 is an ordinance, so we'll leave for that one. It's okay, so 139 is an ordinance, so it's just 407 and 412. Thank you. Council. just four-seven and four-twelve. Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, I'd like to ask about three-eighty-six?
Three-eighty-six?
Yeah, three-eight-six, yep.
It's getting pulled, you know that?
Oh, that one got pulled. Oh, I didn't catch that, sorry. Okay, uh, three-ninety-five?
Three-ninety-five, uh-huh.
Four-ten? And four-eleven?
And four-eleven. Thank you. I think that's it. Good God, see ya. Um, I don't see anybody else, so. Um, Councilwoman Frisby, before I start, are you good?
I'm good, Madam President. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we have, uh, twenty-five, three-ninety-five. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. Uh, so my question regarding this, uh, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So these are, it's a transfer from Park and Capital Atlight. So that would be, uh, capital that we've, uh, financial, uh, numbers that we've taken in for parking tickets and so forth being transferred to, it says other expenses of social security, which, you know, I understand we have to pay that. But when it says Parking and Capital Atlight, what does that actually mean?
Good evening, Council. That's basically, um, monies that have been allocated for capital improvements through the parking utility, and we are moving those, um, allocations to cover some other, um, responsibilities.
Okay, so this is?
So it's a, it's an in, it's a transfer inside, within the utility.
Okay, so that would be TPA, Trenton Parking Authority?
Uh, no, it is our, no, not, not.
When you said, I thought you said.
Internal, uh, it's not for the authority, but from our utility.
From our utility?
Yes.
And our utility is?
Uh, it falls, uh, the utility falls under Public Works.
Under Public Works, okay.
Yes.
So then, uh, regarding any questions on, you know, Trenton Parking Authority, that would not be appropriate?
Not, not for that resolution, correct.
But I do have a question, um, regarding parking enforcement, um, expenses. Do we, um, have any outside training that, you know, the park enforcement officers go through, or what is the training process for that? Reason being, you know, this has been an issue since we've started ticketing people again, which, you know, we actually, we have to do as a city, it's appropriate. But making sure that all the enforcement officers are trained, uh, they have repeat training as necessary and so forth. So then when they're interfacing with the public and, you know, that we need to make sure that, um, you know, the way things are going, that, you know, whether it's identifying a sign at when they should be ticketing people versus when they should not ticket people, or if they're confronted with somebody who's belligerent and so forth. What type of training and how long is that training that they go through before?
I am not sure what, um, the length of the training, but I do know that they get trained, um, as of the, uh, content of the law and the regulations that they are supposed to be enforcing, right? They also receive training from the court system on how to use the handheld devices and that sort of things, but maybe Director Harris will be able to provide a little bit more detail.
Yeah, that would be good, because one of the questions that specifically comes up is about, you know, customer service training, I guess, and interfacing with the public, but then there's also, is often concerns about, you know, when they're taking people for odd things near crosswalks, like what, are they actually following the law? Or if a sign's missing, um, you know, the person parks there and doesn't think there's a regulation, but it turns out they get ticketed anyway because the parking enforcement officer, you know, is enforcing a regulation, someone stole the sign.
Yes, I will defer to Director Harris for more details. Sure.
Good evening, Paul Harris. Listen, um, yes, we do quarterly training with our staff, uh, on state and local regulations as relates to, uh, parking, and we do customer service training on a regular basis. Uh, we meet with our staff monthly. We have to, because in this business, even a ticket that's fifty-five dollars, even when the customer is wrong, they don't want to pay it and they're back and forth. And what we're trying to do, sometimes unsu-, not successfully, is to encourage our staff, listen, write your ticket and go about your business. It's the back and forth. And then we're all human beings, and I have to remind them, as long as they don't physically put their hands on you, there's nothing they can say to you to encourage you to come out of character. That's been a struggle since we started. It's ongoing. But I, we are adequately addressing that, uh, with the recent issue, incidents as well. But it is, it is hard, because if you're out in the field all day, and some of our offices work every day, it's just constant battering, 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 um, you know. And that's, but that's where, but yes, the training is happening.
Okay, thank you, sir. And just as a follow-up, um, how long is the training? Is it for a couple of weeks? And then also, um, because quite frankly, there's always, you know, two sides to every story, but also I do wonder, and other people I'm sure do, you know, make sure that they're not physically harmed. You know, I mean, they are, they have a very difficult job. And I just also wonder, do they get any self-defense training?
So there's no self-defense training, so I've been trying for some time now to get body cameras. And body cameras serve two purposes. When we go to court, it's crystal clear whether you're, whether you're in violation or not. Everybody is innocent in this business, right? So the body camera helps, but it also helps me, because we can log right in remotely and I can see what you're doing, and it helps me if you're saying where you're, it lets me know where you're at and how you are interacting with customers, and we can pull that up at random intervals to see what you're doing. We have been unsuccessful, but I think I found a way around that. Uh, and I'm hoping sometime in the new year that we can get body cameras, and I think that's going to take it to the next level for us. Um, and I think you'll see some improvements, because now you can't lie. I got you on camera.
All right. And then my last question is, um, would it be any potential for them to get, you know, non-verbal, or non-verbal, non-physical, um, defense training in the sense of getting, uh, de-escalation training?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I'm like.
Because they're, they're put in a tough position every single day and just, you know, they don't know how things are going to go if someone comes out to say, don't ticket my car.
Right. So as, up to this point, we've had no physical threats. We've had them slash tires, beat up vehicles, a BB gun to the back windows. There's been a number of things that's happened. No physical contact, lots of threats, which is why we're pushing for body cameras. Um, I'd have to talk with administration to see if they're interested in providing us, uh, that kind of like training.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you very much, sir.
It's fine.
Hold on, um, Councilwoman Frisby, and then Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg?
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, Director Harris, is there, um, do we have something in place for at least if some, if, if you have some officers, and I'm not saying that they're a lot, but I do know every now and again, we have one or two that are acting out of sort, and you say, we have you, we have you on, um, camera. Um, or there have been a series of complaints against any one particular officer. Do we have something in place where we actually give, um, do they have warnings on this, or another disciplinary training or an additional training that goes into place? Um, and then, and if so, are there benchmarks that they have to meet in order to continue on? Or do we say after so many, um, times that there is, these are the consequences that are in place?
So, all of that is governed by our CBA, Collective Bargaining Agreement, and, uh, verbal, written, and then eventually days. If the conduct arise, is egregious, then you can bypass those steps and go straight to multiple days. I should stress this, it's important to say this. Everyone says that the officer's conduct is inappropriate, I mean, all the time. Until we are produced with video evidence, and then it becomes real for us. That's not, we're not saying we're discounting it, but because you get a ticket, you don't want to give up your money, then the officer's in the wrong. I had a video where it was, uh, where the officer, where the customer was saying that the officer was out of line, but from my vantage point, the customer was the one threatening to take the guy's job. And the woman hadn't said, the officer hadn't said anything out of place to the customer. But had I acted on that, so, you know, we are, there are lines, and they understand that, and we remind them every day, well, quarterly, listen, these are the rules and regulations.
Greatly appreciated, Director. I appreciate your time and the response.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisby, and Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, CP. Um, Director, um, thank you for that. Um, I, we understand that there are issues, right, with, with parking in the city. We've had issues for a long time, and we've had issues because there have been really no enforcement for quite some time. You know, we've repeated this over and over again, and now that there is enforcement, um, you know, people are upset, you know? So, um, I'm glad that these trainings are existing. I'm glad that we are looking at these body cams, because if people are so quick to pull out their cameras or phones and record whatever they want to record, and submit it to us councilpeople and whomever else, put it on social media. You know, there are stigmas against certain parking enforcement agents right now. Um, you know, people heard around the world, basically. Um, so I'm really glad for these trainings. I, I, I hope that these trainings, not only in conduct though, but also, um, really, um, focus on clarity and consistency of what the parking ordinances are in the city. Um, and I hope that they also focus on, um, patrolling in terms of consistency of patrolling as well. Because I think that the sooner that the residents get adjusted to, you know, these are the, these are the laws of the city, and these need to be abided by, and we need some type of order, I think that things will kind of fall into place a little bit better. Um, so I'm really just hoping that as part of conduct training, we also are, have a very clear understanding, or the agents do, as to what constitutes a ticket, you know, when they should be ticketing, and, you know, when they should not be. So, thank you for, yeah, for dealing with this.
Thank you.
Councilman Harrison?
CVP, I see you. Uh, Director, how many, um, members do you have, and are you looking to hire more?
Yeah, we are currently looking to hire more, but we are, uh, we've seven so far, but there, it's an ongoing battle to get more staff. That's what I'll say. Yeah.
Yeah, the body cams, I think would be, would be, um, should be a requirement.
Absolutely.
Because I've, I've seen people park on the sidewalk, illegally park in the parks. You know, they're writing the tickets, and then they're getting cursed out, and it's just, so you're right, if you have the camera on there and they're coming towards you, you're right, it can be used in court, so maybe, maybe more people will react, realize that they shouldn't be acting like that in public. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, CVP, Mr. Director Harris, hold on, we're not done.
Sorry, I just have one quick clarifying question, I promise. Um, earlier, uh, BA Richardson said that parking was under public works. It's under recreation, right?
Yes, there's two, yeah.
Maybe it should be.
Two different things, so.
Okay, misspoke, okay. I was like, wait a minute, I thought it was under recreation.
Yes, uh, parking enforcement, I'm sorry, uh, parking enforcement is under recreation. Parking utility, um, they handle the kiosks and, uh, the utility itself. It's under Public Works.
So Public Works handles the kiosk and the utility?
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think that's it. Consent? Thank you.
All right, and now we're moving on to four-ten, I believe. Let me make sure. Hold on, hold on, let me see. Four, yep, four-oh-seven, I'm sorry, four-oh-seven, Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg? So this actually, uh, four-oh-seven and four-twelve are hand-in-hand for me. I just had two quick questions about this. I understand, I understand that this money was coming to rehabilitate, uh, Franklin Park in the amount of about a million dollars. Um, I have talked about it, um, Director Harris has spoken about it at my CPACs. Um, I'm just curious, uh, can I just get clarification as to what Jake's laws grant? Jake's law grant is and what an inclusive playground, what the definition of an inclusive playground is?
Um, the Jake Law basically provide the funding for inclusive, uh, playgrounds, and inclusive playgrounds are playgrounds that allow um, individuals with different abilities and individual, um, of, basically of all abilities to partake in the same space.
So sensory spaces?
Sensory spaces, but also without, uh, segregating those sensory spaces from the mainstream population.
Okay, and, um, this, I think I know the answer to this, but I just wanted to state it for the record. This seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand plus this three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, um, going towards the rehabilitation of Franklin Park. This is to include, um, could, could we kind of just say what exactly this will include in, in addition to the playground? What else, what else is going?
Well, what these two resolutions are seeking, basically, one of them is to include the appropriation in our budget, and the other one is to accept the money. This is basically a requirement from, uh, Green Acres from the EPP. As of the details of the playground, I would rather Paul Harris to give you those.
Thank you.
Sure.
So this is, this is going to answer, uh, twenty-five, four-one-two. So, from the community meetings that we would host with you and, uh, South Trenton residents, what you'll have is the existing playground will be demolished and expanded. Uh, there'll be safety, uh, surfacing that would be, uh, conducive to people with, uh, different disabilities. There'll be a, uh, my God, there'll be sidewalks, curbs, there'll be some handicap parking on the street designation. There will also be a pavilion and some improvements to the basketball court. All of those things, but what you see there now is old and just outdated, and, uh, it's all going to be brand new. Now, what's going to happen is we're going to award a resolution for our contract in December, God willing. And then the vendor then will then order the equipment, you know, arrive late spring. And then, assuming the weather and other things work out, will be sometime in late summer, you know, and then, uh, that's where we'll be at for installation. But the park, just so you know, because we're going to let residents know, that park will be inaccessible for a good period of time. But you and I will work together to make sure they know.
Okay, and anything with regards to lighting and trees?
So, so what we will do is, there's no plan for lighting at this point, but what I will do is, if there are any trees that are, uh, covering lights, we will trim them, like we're going to do at Pat Pone, right? And then we'll just, we'll spruce it up. What we're trying to do is sort of like what Public Works does, but they're complete streets. So if we're going to spend all this money at the park, we're trying to address as much stuff in the park as possible. That's what we're going to work on.
Thank you so much, Director.
That's it?
Good.
Oh, sorry, Councilman Harrison?
Director Harris, um, so for this, but we talked to this before. What is going to happen in the near future with Unity Park with the soccer?
Okay, so Unity, if you've been there, what we've done is, we have, um, so Team America's done playing, right? So we, our guys internally, we've been there, we have been grading the field. Okay, we removed a lot of infield mix. Uh, we demolished the old school board, old light poles, and then in about two weeks, actually on the eighteenth, new fence will be installed. We're going to demolish the old fence, the dugouts, and what you'll have is a large soccer field there. And then what we're going to do is then we're going to seed it and get it ready. Hopefully, it'll be in time, it'll be ready in time for this, uh, Team America.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Council President?
Uh, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. So I just want to follow my colleague, um, Mr. Harrison's question. So since Unity Park's shared by the North Ward and the East Ward, regarding the trees, I know I've chatted with you before, in the park to reduce the, uh, canopy at the lower levels, so people have more walkway space, and also make it less dark, uh, at night. Because we spent a lot of time trying to get PSENG to replace the bulbs and the lights and stuff. Is there any chance that could happen, um, maybe by spring, uh, to offer more lighting or sometimes during the winter, uh, for people who walk through the park at night, um, et cetera? Or in the dusk hours?
So what we, what we are looking at in all of our parks are addressing low-hanging trees that are covering our lights. And then the other issue is, you know, anyone who knows PSENG, it's an uphill battle getting them to do anything. So I'm struggling with holes that are damaged where the light fixture is out or cracked. So we want to repair that. The park is dark, because we need to have a real conversation about LED lighting. That's what we need to have a conversation about.
All right, thank you very much.
Council President?
Councilman Harrison?
One more question.
Sure.
The park, graffiti, the park is loaded with graffiti. Can we get the graffiti vehicle out there and clean that park, because everything's spray painted everywhere?
So, we'll put the request in, as we've done, but just so we're clear, it'll be right back there today after tomorrow. I mean, we've done, you see that we spent. I mean, we've done, you see that we spent a lot of money on building a new playground and it's, it's all tagged up. So we do our due diligence, but as soon as we do that, it's back. The other, you know, it's a struggle and it's after our security guards are gone. So it's like literally overnight.
Are we planning on in the near future putting cameras in there?
So we have cameras in the park currently.
Right.
The question is, do we plan on expanding our footprint? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it. Thank you, uh, Director Harris. So that's consent, uh, Mr. Garcia.
Got it.
Um, now we're down to four ten, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Um, so my question regarding this is, um, the improvements to South Warren West Front. Do we have, um, a little bit more of an exact timetable of when those will all be completed? Hopefully by next summer, uh, but also would any work be commencing, um, before the end of the year and the Battle of Trenton reenactment?
So, um, I'm sorry, could you please repeat the question?
Sure, uh, as far as this work, I know it's, it's desperately needed, uh, quite in some ways. But, uh, would any of this be able to be commenced and completed by last weekend in December for Battle of Trenton? Or is this going to be twenty twenty?
No, because, um, the weather, most likely the weather is not permitting, yeah, that we complete that. But at the beginning of the spring, it's most likely when they will be able to complete that project.
Yeah, that would be great because the work that's been done so far is made such a difference. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Thank you, Council President.
Is it consent?
Uh, consent, please, yeah.
Thank you. And then we have four eleven, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. So, uh, my question regarding this, I'm totally supportive of adding more trees. Certainly we need them, um, and Cowalwater Park is such a jewel for the city. But, um, I know I've, I've made requests for additional trees, particularly on Market Street. And, um, as you're coming from twenty nine from the train station or also the river. And there's some other locations that requested trees. So I just wanted to ask you, I know we're, uh, devoting a hundred to Cowalwater. I don't know how soon they could get installed, um, or planted because of winter coming. But would it be any potential, and I know I've harassed about this, but again, any, uh, trees replaced, the trees I've been missing for a long time on, uh, Market Street? Because one of the things it also does is, you know, as they get bigger, obviously, it provides more of a landscape for cars speeding on Market Street. But also when we have a lot of windstorms, it blows so much debris, cardboard boxes, et cetera, from Broad Street all the way up, um, from twenty nine and then from the train station that. I think it would help break that up. And additionally, uh, the other thing is the issue in the parking enforcement is always involved with all the cars illegally parking, including in the bus stop in front of Crowzers on Market.
So the answer is, the answer is yes. We are planting two hundred and twenty-two additional trees this fall. And we're kind of late, but that's the plan. Yeah, they're going to be scattered about, yep, because we've talked about this, Mill Hill, Market Street, all over. There's some, on someone's Stuyvesant, there's been a number of requests from residents as well. So yes, there is a plan, we're just a little delayed.
Okay, so the trees for, uh, are we closing out twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, that's the plan. Uh, we had a meeting last week and we're still on, if anything.
Oh, okay, so we still might be able to get some trees in before December.
So we just.
Okay, sweet. If there are any additional ones that can also, uh, be spotted on Brunswick Avenue, that would be sweet.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank, uh, no, Councilman Harrison.
Hey, look, I'm on a roll. The planning of these trees, the two, the two twenty-two, are you doing them during the week or during the weekend?
Oh, these are generally done during the week.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if you're doing it on the weekend, I'll volunteer to help.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like to do one.
It counts, the woman Frisbee.
Yeah, Madam President, I just had a, um, quick question. I wanted to know whether or not are we going to be working with outdoor equity on this initiative? Since they bring a lot of trees, uh, to the city and that could probably help us in a great way with, when it comes to costs towards this.
Yes, just so we understand about planting trees, we're not using any of our money at all. This is all grant money, all of it's grant money.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Consent, uh, Councilwoman Williams? Okay, thank you. And then I know Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg said four twelve is also consent.
Yeah.
Yes. So, Mr. Garcia, I think that's it.
Certainly is, Madam President. So if you would like to ask for a motion to approve, consent agenda consisting of, well, all the resolutions of this evening, or if you'd like me to list them, I can.
Yes, this is long, except for three eighty-sixths.
I'm sorry? Yes, for all the resolutions with the exception of three eighty-six, if you'd like to ask for a motion?
Maybe have a motion to approve everything on residence.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And that brings us to ordinances. Ordinances for first reading and sec-, excuse me, for first reading and introduction. Orders twenty-five dash one thirty-nine, ordinance amending chapter eighty-nine of the Code of the City of Trenton entitled Fire Hydrants. Madam President, if you want us to motion to approve?
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. And I believe. Okay, sorry. Okay, yep, sorry. Roll call. Okay, roll call.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one forty, in ordinance amending chapter one ninety-three of the Code of the City of Trenton entitled Parks and Recreation Areas.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one forty-one, ordinance amending chapter one ninety-three of the Code of the City of Trenton titled Fees.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Orders twenty-five dash one forty-two, in ordinance amending ordinance twenty-five dash one oh six to remove the conveyance of thirteen Trent Street to Brittany Littlejohn.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, Madam President? Councilwoman, uh, uh, Figueroa Kattonberg?
Thank you. Can I, um, Mr. Beach, can you just kind of explain what removing the conveyance means in this ordinance?
Yes, Councilwoman. So if you may recall, under ordinance twenty-five one zero six, the city was conveying various properties that were in, actually, they were in condemned properties to different builders. And this was the one property that unfortunately got basically double, double picked, which was being conveyed for sale for one, uh, ordinance and then also being conveyed to Ms. Littlejohn to, um, stabilize and repair. So since we obviously can't give the same property to two people, this is removing that property from her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Orders twenty-five dash one forty-three, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property commonly known as three twenty-three North Olden Avenue, identified on the city tax map as block two one nine zero seven, lot one pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen C to three twenty-three North Olden LLC for the sale price of one hundred thousand dollars.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, Madam President? Councilwoman, uh, Figueroa Kattonberg, I keep getting ready to write her name.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Beach, again with this, I have a quick question. Now this, there was no RFP needed for this. This is, uh, a larger property. It will be utilized for mixed use of, um, I guess residential and business or commercial, correct? There was. Okay, okay, so then my question was, this doesn't fall under the property sale guidelines of the other properties? It does. It does not. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Roll call?
Certainly, Vice, uh, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Orders twenty-five dash one forty-four, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as twenty-seven Popular Street and identified on the city tax map as block two one four zero three, lot thirty-two pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen C to the real property LLC for the sale price of one thousand dollars.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Thank you. So, Mr. Beach, um, so this, this falls under question, the, the issues that I've had with some of the other property sales, as you know, that I've made vocal. And I know it's been challenged, uh, by you, um, that twenty-five hundred square feet does not constitute a buildable lot or no longer does, or depending on the neighborhood.
Correct.
What have you, right. This, and this happens to be a fourteen hundred square foot lot with a property on it, with a building on it.
No, there is no building on it.
It's the photo as a building.
This is a open lot?
No, it's not. Not according to what's in the packet.
I don't believe that that's the right photo that goes with the property.
Okay.
This is a thirteen hundred and ninety foot lot?
Well, she's bringing up too, shows an actual building on the lot.
Okay.
Yeah. But, I mean, albeit it's, it's burned and, 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 no, I understand that. But the question, the issue was that twenty-five hundred square feet didn't even constitute a buildable lot. But here we have fourteen hundred square feet with a property on it and adjacent properties as well that look like the same lot size. Again, my question is regardless of the condition of it or what have you, this is still only fourteen hundred square foot lot. There is a property on it and we're selling it for a thousand dollars, albeit the condition. If you look at ordinance twenty-five one forty-five, now we're looking at a twenty-three hundred square foot lot under twenty-five hundred square feet and we're selling it for seventy-five thousand dollars. And there's a property on that as well. So again, that's another buildable lot in another part of Trenton. So again, I, I just wanted to point out the inconsistencies with these property sales and why I'm so conflicted. And I just wanted to state that for the record. This is why I maintain voting the way that I'm voting.
Understood, Madam. What we have shown in the guidelines though, that, you know, we have the pricing rubric that we have not shared with the public. But then there are other factors that we have indicated get taken into consideration, among them being the neighborhood that it's in, among them being the condition of the property or the lot that it's on and the size of the lot.
Understood, but like, again, and, and also to the point that it has been stated that twenty-five hundred square feet is not in fact a buildable lot. And now these are two lots with homes on them that are under twenty-five hundred square feet. So I just have a problem with that, you know, it just, we, I understand we're trying to piece this together and make it make sense. But again, in my brain, it still does not if there are no set specifications.
As I think you and I have discussed, you know, we're not going to have a perfect system, but, you know, we continue to work on it.
Madam President?
Council Vice President? Thank you. Uh, maybe I could help clarify things a little bit, um, with, and we do have an HED meeting on Monday. So we'll be providing the report and everything, um, to the rest of council. And, uh, we can provide the, the document that you gave, Mr. Beach. If you can provide that to us and email, we can share with the rest of council.
Absolutely.
Mine was all marked up, so I didn't, I couldn't make a copy of it. But the differences between these two properties comes down to the offer made by the buyer. So the one with the burnt property, they only offered a thousand based on, I guess, the conditions of the property. But this second one coming up at fifty-five St. Hegan, it is significantly larger. But this home, the person actually lives there and it's not in a severe state of disrepair. So I believe that's why that offer was at seventy-five thousand, because it is, is a habitable property and probably worth that much or maybe a little bit more. It's a city-owned property, but they currently reside there. So that's, that.
And, and that was the offer?
Right, that was the offer from them.
Correct.
So it wasn't like, uh, the, the administration set a minimum and then that's what they went by. The thousand dollars was what the buyer had offered. And because of the state of the property, the administration didn't really negotiate for a higher price because it was, it's burnt down. And then this one, the next one coming up is a, a habitable property that someone actually lives in and they just want to buy it from the city.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Thank you for that. No, and I understand exactly what you're saying. I understand, you know, what you're saying. I understand what, you know, some of my colleagues have said about this. However, it, it's been my issue that even when lots are being sold that are up or above twenty-five hundred square feet, we're selling them again for a thousand dollars and saying it's not a buildable lot, when in fact it is. So they can build a property on it and we're selling it for like a thousand dollars or something. So that is my issue, you know, we're selling, we're selling empty lots of twenty-five hundred square feet and more for like a thousand. But we're also selling fourteen hundred square fi-, lots with a property on it that needs to be rehabbed for a thousand. But then we're also selling a property, again, for twenty-three thousand square feet with a property for seventy-five thousand. It just, it doesn't, again, it just doesn't, you know, across the board, it's, it's not making sense. If you're looking at the zoning, um, code, um, you know, and what those protocols are for buildable lots in, in, in different residential areas in the city of Trenton, whether it's single family, uh, dual family, attached, not attached, row home, still we're not, I don't feel like we're falling under those guidelines when we're selling these properties. So, that's, thank you.
Madam President? Uh, one second, CVP, I was going to allow Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you very much. So I just wanted to, um, add a couple of things. I, I believe in the spirit of what, uh, my colleague, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg is speaking about. We need to have some kind of formula that, you know, every location, location, location is the rule of everything, including the neighborhood it's in and so forth. But some of this stuff doesn't seem to work out square footage wise for some of the lots versus other lots. I think we do need to work that out over time. So I think from the public perception, it'd be the most fair. I know you're, uh, trying your best to do this, Mr. Beach, particularly in a market that is so varied. Uh, I've visited this property a number of times and I've sent you emails, as I'm sure you know. Because the front of it, this is, uh, a property I'm very thankful, I will be voting yes, that our city is moving upon to sell it because it has a tree growing inside. The garden state brick face out front, um, is falling and cracking off. It's even worse than what this picture shows, uh, on Google. It is a property that is clearly pulling down a block which actually is holding its own. It's a block, Popular Street, that really having someone come in, take this property and build, uh, a livable unit will make a huge difference. And people will see that, so I'm very, very supportive of what you're doing. And, you know, St. Hegan, we did meet on that with the committee. It was a very thorough discussion as Councilwoman, uh, Edwards had mentioned. And, um, that is a livable space, it's presently occupied and it can, it's something that's been offered. So that's going to be taken care of. But with something like this, which, you know, famously we had a house on Walnut Avenue, had a tree growing out of it, even worse than that, it was like a redwood practically. You can't compare the two, but you can compare the land on the lot that it's on. So and I think that's something that we need to work out over time. I'm hopeful that over the coming months, we can do that, but there has to be some kind of a base formula. I think that is appropriate. So, thank you very much, Council President.
Madam President? CVP?
I just want to add on to what Councilwoman Williams said, uh, which was excellent. For the one coming up next for one forty-five and the reason why we see that at being seventy-five thousand, which is significantly higher than what we have seen before for. significantly higher than what we have seen before for properties or land with structures on them, this is the property, if you remember, from the last meeting we had, where the brother and sister came in and their mother passed, and the city had foreclosed on them because of the liens or from the taxes not being paid. So they owed about $60,000 in taxes. So when we met with the HED ad hoc, and outside of that, Councilwoman Frisbee was advocating for them as well, for the administration to negotiate with them on a purchase price for this particular property, because we didn't want to let it go for dirt cheap like we've seen some of the other properties. They lived there, and the back taxes on the property exceeded $60,000. So we were hopeful that they would be able to pay at least that much, you know, so that the city can recuperate what they were supposed to make on the years that they were occupying the house after their mother, or even during her life in that property, if I'm saying that correctly. So that's why this one is significantly higher, because they owed taxes on there, and this rectifies that. And then back to the one that we're on now, the 1,400 square foot one, there, we do need to clarify or clear, so when we do meet on Monday with our ad hoc, we can clarify, like, what is a conforming or non-conforming property, because some of these properties, like the one right here, is a row home under 2,500 square feet, which is considered a buildable lot in today's standard, but these houses must be upwards of 100-plus years old, which is probably grandfathered into, like, it would be probably considered a non-conforming lot if it didn't have a building on it right now. So in today's time compared to when it was built, so that probably is what the differences are with conforming and non-conforming. But, Mr. Beach, can we go over that in our meeting?
Absolutely, Council Vice President. And, you know, as I had discussed with Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg, you know, she pointed out that there are different size conforming and non-conforming lots, depending on, to your point, what neighborhood they may be in. If it's in a row house neighborhood, a conforming lot will be smaller than if it's in a separate independent house neighborhood, and so, you know, we can try to figure that out.
Right, right. That would be much helpful for us to understand the differences, the fluctuations in the offers and everything.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg.
I just, like, for clarity, like, this is, this is, this is bigger than these two properties right now, these two on the ordinances now. This is the culmination of all the properties that we've seen over the course of time. And I said it before, like, I just feel like there should be a percentage of-
Gets to come in and maintain a part of their family's history. Although someone else could not, someone else is now deceased from it. But I love that the city is working so that our community gets to keep it in the community as opposed to someone coming in from another state coming in. So I just want to say I'm excited about this one. And kudos to the city for working with these families now to try and allow them to retain their property.
And yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Frisby, because I know you kind of took the lead on that. And making sure that the communication was consistent with the family and admin. So thanks for your effort in that, too.
Thank you, ma'am.
Roll call, Garcia.
Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-146, an ordinance amending Chapter 176 of the Code of the City of Trenton entitled Parades.
Um, maybe have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-147, ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to disposition agreement and the sale of city-owned properties to Vista Center Development LLC.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Council President?
Yes.
Just wanted to ask if we could get a little bit of an explanation, some highlights at least, on what this actually means with the center. Because it's in the area around the train station redevelopment area specifically. It's actually inside of it. So I wanted to see if Ms. Grishen could just kind of highlight what this actually will mean for our city.
Mr. Beach? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
So it's regarding, I'm sorry, ma'am.
147, or the Vista Center around the transit area?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but you could just explain it, if you can kind of highlight what this actually means and what it will do for our city as it lies in the train station redevelopment area, which I know we have a lot of great hopes for. And it's taken a long time for us to kind of get it jump-started.
Yes, so this particular property has been in litigation for a number of years. And actually ended up going all the way up to the New Jersey Supreme Court, where they found in favor of the individual who were now conveying to. There was another individual who was moving to bar that sale for this entirety of the period. To your point, Councilwoman, you know, this will hopefully become a key factor in redeveloping that transit area around the train station.
Okay, and for the specific portion, can you kind of describe where it's located?
I don't quite know where that is.
Oh, okay. I just, it didn't necessarily list it, but my understanding it's on the Raul Wallenberg side. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank Council President.
Thank you. Roll call?
Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Sorry.
And that brings us to the point of public comment. If I could have the public comment clipboard, please. And to the public, public comment will be five minutes for each individual. You may address any item that you wish. And our first, the council is not obligated to respond. First person listed is Karian Bayan.
Baya.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Press the button, please, Karian.
There you go.
Kareem Bay, 53 Poland. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The first week of July, July 2nd or 3rd, I came down here after driving around looking for city-owned properties. I came down, I talked to the person at the desk. I told him the properties I was interested in. I said, how do I bid? She said, well, offer what you can afford, offer what you want, because in the past, they've been giving properties away for a dollar. I said, okay, so. She gave me the email to email. The email didn't go through. I came back down here on the 6th. She told me to email. She gave me the proper email. I emailed the person on the 6th of July, no answer. I came back down here a third time and they told me, oh, that person no longer works here. You have to mail it to Trenton Properties, such and such. I did that. I got a response saying that we received your email. We'll contact you, I'm not sure the amount of time, seven, 10 days. No response. From July 6th till two weeks ago. I'm down here a good 15, 20 times. No response to my emails, phone calls, every time I come here. Oh, we'll get back to you. Check back next week. Check back next week. So when I did put the offer in, being that, from my understanding, we give a properties away for a dollar. I said, well, I'm gonna bid a thousand dollars, hopefully, you know, that should do it. From my understanding, it was first come, first served. Even the Councilwoman, when she cut out her memo, basically it just said, you gotta show proof of funds that you complete the rehab on a property. It never said there was a minimum bid. It never said, well, you gotta pay a percentage of what the property assesses for. The property that I'm looking at is 842 Riverside. It's been empty for over 10 years. There's a tree growing through the living room. I went by there with two contractors. They tell me it's gonna cost about $200,000 to fix the property up. About three weeks ago, I come down here to complain again. I was told, give us your best offer. I said, but it doesn't go by first come, first served? She said, give us your best offer. I did that. Two days later, I was told I didn't get it. I asked why? She said, someone outbid it you. I said, well, I didn't figure, I didn't think it was a bidding process. I felt my best offer was what I could afford. And if the city agreed, it was to be yes or no. I didn't realize we were into bidding, you know, residents bidding back and forth to each other for city properties. From my understanding, you're supposed to basically get the property back on the tax road that's been empty for over 10 years and move forward. I've been sending emails, like I said, since July. Came down here, last couple of meetings, listening to how the process works. From my understanding, it's first come, first served. You just said earlier, if there's a minimum and I can meet the minimum, give me the chance to meet the minimum, and if I can't, move on. Dumb in here, Chief of Staff told me today that the property was sold, or it was awarded to whoever, and I don't understand that. I was never told, well, we're asking this amount of money for the property. Can you, can you, can you meet us here? Or can you meet us halfway, or can we go back and forth? I was never given that opportunity. When I gave my best offer, I thought my best offer was yes or no. I didn't know I was bidding with someone else. So I don't think it's fair, like, he said, well, we can't tell you what the property, what we're asking for. We're bidding against ourselves. I'm not a realtor. I don't know what's a fair market value. I don't know how to say, well, this is what I want to do. But the house has been empty for 10 years and it needs over 200. If you go in, in the daytime, you can see the sun through the roof. The house is in bad condition, but it's in a good area. I was talking to somebody last week, they said, oh, you're not gonna get that. That's riverfront property, because his face is 29. Can someone tell me what's the process? And then how did they come with their decision to who they sold it to? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. You're gonna want to turn on the microphone.
I'd be in a bet, 615 South Clinton Avenue. I've been complaining for the longest. We have this pole behind the building. It's gonna fall, kill somebody. I mean, or it's gonna fall on somebody that's driving. It's not gonna be a pretty picture. Somebody's definitely gonna get hurt or killed. And nobody fixed this pole yet. If it was in White Oak Section, they would have fixed this pole real fast. It's on Hamilton Avenue around, well, I live in 615 South Clinton Avenue, so it's around the corner. It either's gonna fall on my building, or it's gonna fall on the street. And it's gonna fall on pedestrians and kids, babies, and it's gonna kill somebody. So they need to really tend to this pole. And I have one more issue. The library, when they cutting trees, I don't know, the employees doing this or what, they leave the branches on top of the trees. I had pictures, these bad branches they have, fall on somebody, it's gonna kill somebody also. It's right on the property with the library at downtown library, along the street. There's big ones that's up there, they left up there when they cut the branches.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams, go ahead.
We may ask the lady to show the picture and the location to Mr. Garcia, so we have it. I believe that's near Palatary Homes.
Yeah, she said, which one?
615 South Clan?
Yeah, yes.
So maybe you'll be able to help her with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam President, those are the only individuals I have listed for public comment this evening.
Well, thank you, Mr. Garcia. That's why you're so incredible.
If it's your wish, we can move to civic comment.
Yes. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much, ma'am. So as I start off, I want to start off a happy note. First of all, thank you for everyone coming tonight and watching us online. It's good to see so many people here, particularly after we had an election where it looks like a lot of Trentonians voted and folks made sure they got out the extra extra American right to vote, which is important. So my happy note I like to talk about is the Trenton High Football Team. Fortunately, they recently did lose their playoff game, but they made the state playoffs for the first time in a very long time. I don't know how long it's been, a number of years, but that was really, really great. So just want to congratulate them on them, on doing that. And if you happen to know any of the boys that are on the team, please congratulate them. I have some announcements. This coming Wednesday, November 12th, we'll be having our North Ward City Police Advisory Council meeting a week early because of the League of Municipalities. And our special guest will be Fire Director Kenneth Douglas, who's going to be performing a fire prevention demonstration, which I know he did at the West Ward Community, and Councilwoman Frisby has. And it looked very, very helpful from what I saw online. So please, spread the word to come to the North Ward CPAC meeting this Wednesday at Galley Baptist Church, 440 Martin Luther King Boulevard. Also, there's an interesting event, I have a flyer case, so you might want to see it, for Princeton Mercer Chamber of Commerce. It is a ticketed event, but a lot of people keep asking about what's gonna happen in Trenton for the 250th anniversary, Birthday of America. And they'll be having an event coming up at Cooper's River View at 7:30 a.m., so it's early next Wednesday, from 7:30 to 10:00. It's entitled Trenton's Turning Tie: Leveraging History for the Capital City's Growth. And Mayor Guzior will be having opening remarks, along with the moderator's John Hatch. And the panelists will be Richard Hunter, Sally Lane, who used to be our Trenton historian, and Jamie Volkert for the director, she's the Director of Division of Travel and Tourism in Mercer County. So please try to attend if you're interested in what's happening with the 250th. Ask good questions, because we want to make sure that Trenton is a big part of that, whether we're part of someone else's celebration or not. And I know administration's working hard on that. And also, this coming Monday, this is important. The City of Trenton and Mr. Beach just want to thank him directly for ensuring that we have a Veterans Day celebration on this coming Monday, November 10th. And it'll be at the Trenton Fire Department Headquarters, Perry Street, starting at 9:00 a.m. And it'll be recognizing all city employees who have served in our military. So if you could, please spread the word on that for this coming Monday morning at 9:00 a.m. If you know any veterans, particularly our Vietnam veterans, if you could remind them to come so we could pay proper respect to them and anyone who's served in our military, particularly in our wars overseas. Also, the Department of Health, this coming Saturday is gonna be having a flash food drive for dog and cat owners from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Trenton Animal Shelter, 72 Escher Street. And this is a great effort that Health Department, Dr. Minna Capelli, is having to help folks, particularly given the situation with SNAP benefits and anyone else, as the economy's getting tougher with people being laid off. So please spread the word, it's this Saturday at the shelter from 3:00 to 5:00 for cat food, dog food, and so forth. And then I just want to say thank you and congratulate my colleagues on two resolutions that passed tonight. The first being 25-421 for the Perry Street Corridor Study, which is gonna be really important for us to be having, asking the state of New Jersey to conduct a study around ninth grade academy. And they all, the traffic situation at Perry Street and Route 1. This has been going on for a long time, and there's a lot of community partners involved. So I'm just really happy that we're able to pass this and try to make sure that a study begins initiation before changes of governor administrations. And then also, 25-423, resolution to support for Senator Shirley Turner's bill, which is S4350, which will allow acquisition of land in urban areas by the Garden State Preservation Trust. And this is in order to increase urban farming, but also the idea of having mini forest and other vegetation in cities to reduce effects of global warming and heat islands. So this is a really important bill. If you can contact Senator Turner's support and offer support as a citizen, that would be really great. And I just want to also just close with wishing everybody a great month in November and Happy Thanksgiving. God bless.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I'm Councilwoman Frisby. I know she has to jump off.
So thank you, Council President. I appreciate you allowing me to jump in here. I wanted to just echo some of my colleague sentiments. One, I wanted to also piggyback on the dog food, dog and cat, the flash food drive, reminding everybody that everything is free and it is on a first come, first served basis. But in addition to that, they're gonna give you a list of available dogs that we're gonna be having there as well for adoption. And I wanted to just thank Dr. Diego Minna Capelli for making sure that we have that information. In addition to that, this Thursday, the 13th, I'll be having my final West Ward Community Conversation Meeting. It'll be the last one for the year. And our Honorable Regusior is gonna be my, one of my speakers, along with County Clerk Paula Salami Cavelo. She will be there, because there's a lot of information that the clerk's office actually provides that outside of just taking care of all that, there's a lot of, a plethora of information that needs to be disseminated, making sure that folks know that they can go to the office and get those services. So she will also be a guest speaker there for my closeout, being that in December, we will not be having a meeting due to the holidays that are coming up. I believe that is actually, let me just look here, my last email, yes, so that is it. So I just wanted to just tell everybody if we don't see you before the Thanksgiving or the rest of that, to be safe as you're going about. I also did want to address the Tyson family, if they're still there. I wanted to say congratulations on maintaining your mother's tone. You guys did what you were supposed to do. You did it in decent and order. And I did want to also give a special thanks to Chief of Staff Beach, because he did help walk me through that process. So I just want to give, I want to give acknowledgement, where acknowledgement is due. And for all my other colleagues who were doing their best also to help make sure that we could do this one. But if we can do this and help this family maintain their loved one's home, we should be able to do the same thing for other families as they're coming in after a loved one has passed or a family member just needs help. Helping our community maintain their family's property is extremely important. And again, as Council President said, we did this whole redoning of our city so that we can help more citizens maintain their ownership of their family's property. So with that, I want to read again a mission of, a portion of the city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians, have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility and to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the people, the City of Trenton with respect and compassion. I wish everyone a good evening. Thank you again, Council President, for allowing me to jump in. And I also appreciate all the rest of you who've done what you need to do. But I appreciate everybody who's there this evening and for coming out, all of the directors and everybody who works with us to make sure that our city betters its best.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisby. Councilman Harrison?
I would like to call Director Wilson up. If you could speak a little bit, I know we had a bomb threat over like Hedgepath Williams and speak about the wonderful job that was done regarding the catalytic converters.
Steve Wilson, Police Director. So yeah, 5:00 in the morning on Election Day, the Chief of Detectives for Mercer County called me up. Brandon called me up, we had an issue. So we immediately initiated our protocol for these type of threats. And that involves the city police department, also the county, state, and local officials. And what we found, we called our canines out. We cleared our location fairly quickly. The conversation between Brandon and I was we need to get this cleared and open. And we had little to no delay in our location. We also assisted with getting canines out to Ewing High School. And then we got the information that this was a statewide issue. So our partners with the state police, we called for them as well, but they were tied up in the whole state, all their canines. So, but in general, it went off pretty well. And there was not a whole lot of delays, none for us. But around the state, the delays were at a minimum because we acted on it very quickly. As far as the catalytic converter investigation, that had been an ongoing investigation. It was a tri-state theft ring involving catalytic converters and stolen vehicles that were being shipped out to other countries. Our, I have to give all the kudos to Sergeant Mahan from the Criminal Investigation Bureau and his property crimes team. They were, they were able to charge 34 counts of theft for catalytic converter thefts that occurred in the city to some of the folks that were doing, and they were already apprehended in another jurisdiction for thefts there. They were able to charge them down here because they continued to keep their noses to the grindstone and take these guys out of action. And if you don't know, catalytic converter thefts, the price on a catalytic converter can go from, anywhere's from $800 to $1,500 a catalytic converter. That's why there's three precious metals inside them. And so that's why they're so highly coveted by thieves. But our, your Criminal Investigation Bureau and Trenton Police Department did an excellent job with that to put the cherry on top in charges for these criminals.
Thank you, Director Williams, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Director Wilson, regarding Hedgepath Williams School, make sure it was cleared, and the partnership regarding these catalytic converters. Thank you so much. Could I get Director Wally on the Terry? Could you speak about the community cleanups? How did we do regarding this community cleanups regarding the whole city?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Yes, Director Nuthery, Public Works. We did a great job in the city for four weeks. And I would say thank you to some of the councils that shows up, you know, the councils to help assist in doing some cleanings. It was a great thing in the city that we did. And, you know, so far, everything is looking good now, even though we've seen people coming back again to dump in the alleyways. So we're doing that again, so that's where we are.
Right, I would like to thank you, Hector Garland, Bryson, your staff, they were out there working hard. So thank you so much. Like you said, it's an ongoing thing. We get more people in the community, keep coming forward, giving us pictures and evidence, so maybe we can prosecute more people who are doing this. Regarding, that was it regarding, regarding the animal shelter, we're having, as you said, over the weekend, if we can get people, also if they can donate, like dog bowls, collars, or leashes, anything that can help, because all the, the animal shelter needs all the help they can get. And I know there's a lot of people that are gonna come there for dog food and cat food. But if, if you're able to, anybody in the community, please do your part. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Thank you, CP. Thank you all for being here tonight. I just wanted to speak on this briefly, because I feel like I've spoken on it a lot. But again, with regards to the properties, I don't want anybody to think that I'm against the sale of these properties. I can't cherry pick what I can, you know, say yes to and no to if I, if I feel like the culmination just doesn't make sense. The family tonight, congratulations, I'm glad you guys were able to get that, absolutely. I agree with some of these property sales, just not all of them. My colleagues are in agreement for the most part of these property sales. I have not interjected one sale of property. It's just my belief that it just doesn't make sense to me. And I just want everybody to understand that. I am a Trenton through and through, I've been here my entire life. I'm glad these properties are being sold. I just, like I said, for me, I just want it to make sense. Kudos to my colleagues who are trying to help me make sense of it. You know, whatever you guys believe makes sense, Mr. Beach. And I just, I feel it's right for me to vote the way that I'm voting. So I just wanted to be clear about that. Other than that, Thanksgiving's approaching, you guys. We don't have a meeting until December. So I know the Boys and Girls Clubs gives out turkeys and meals. CP may have the actual date for that. I don't have that, so she could give that, if she gets a chance. As far as St. Bartholomew Church is giving out, is collecting turkeys and having a turkey drive and other goods on November 22nd at 10:00 a.m. So if you can make a donation, that'd be great. They're also having a Justice and Love Concert on November 20th at 7:00 p.m. This is St. Bartholomew's Church at 1746 South Clinton Avenue. They will be collecting goods at that concert as well. My CPAC, my South Ward CPACs were canceled for November and for December. My CPACs fell on the fourth Thursday of every month, and those days are Thanksgiving and Christmas. So my next CPAC will be January 22nd. And I look forward to seeing you guys all after Thanksgiving. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and have a blessed night. Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Thank you, CP. Good evening, everyone. And I have a number of things I really want to talk about, but I want to say first, congratulations to the Tyson family on the purchase of your family home. This meant a lot to all of us on council. If I could speak on behalf of everyone, everyone made note that we want to prioritize Trenton residents to get these properties. And Councilwoman Frisby, she has been advocating hard. That HED ad hoc with myself, Councilwoman Williams and Feliciano, we have advocated very hard for you guys to be prioritized in that process. So, and in all fairness that it was due. So congratulations and kudos to the administration for your due diligence as well and giving them a fair opportunity to rectify this, to secure, resecure their family home back into their possession. I want to say to Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg, I wholeheartedly sympathize with everything, with your concerns with this process. There has been, just all year long, we have been inundated with people that have been coming to us about concerns of how these property sales are being handled. And most recently, there is a lot of commotion on social media that is suggesting that there is corruption in some sales, not these properties in particular. Hopefully not, that this council has approved. But mainly with the county record recordings and things of that nature that deserves due diligence to be looked into. So I definitely err on the side of caution and doing my due diligence in this as well to make sure we're not implicated in any illegal doings. And in speaking of illegal doings, we definitely need to crack down on these illegal strip clubs, lounges across the city. Over the weekend, there was a young man, 17-year-old, who was murdered at a teenage party on Halloween at an illegal strip club slash lounge at One Hanover that has been operating for at an illegal strip club slash lounge at One Hanover that has been operating for a couple of years now. And through the grapevine on the streets, this man that is running this place also runs for other locations around the city that have been running rampant for years. And this is something that, you know, we have been addressing with the administration. And I'm hoping that the police department can offer some solutions on being, these properties being cracked down to prevent further loss of life, damage, violence, because that area has been a hotspot since last summer, to my knowledge, in terms of shootings, fights, and what have you. And, and that is right behind Mercer County Community College and right across the street from Capital City High School. And that is unacceptable. I want to say well wishes to Mr. Cologi, our city council attorney. He was in a car accident on the way here. He said he is okay, but you know how your adrenaline is. You don't feel pain when that happens. So I'm praying that all is well with him. So that's why he wasn't here tonight. Lastly, I want to say thank you again to my colleagues who have supported the ad hoc committee. So far, there is two of us committed to this committee, and we are waiting for a third for just one monthly meeting commitment with the administration to address the needs of this utility. So I'm hoping to continue the conversations with my colleagues as we kind of do get through the process of who that third person is going to be. There's seven of us, so you know, we gotta figure that out. So hopefully, you know, we'll figure that out and we'll have a meeting on the calendar soon to address the needs of utility. And with that being said, with the new election that just happened, we should be in a better position with DEP moving forward, that I think that weight is off, you know, with that fear of what could have happened if it went the other way. So hopefully, we'll continue to have support from DEP financially towards the assessment. And we, we're hopefully not wrapped up in a time crunch with trying to get that done before the end of the year now that we do have an administration that seems to be in favor of, you know, helping the capital city. So I look forward to those conversations through our ad hoc committee as well. And on that note, that is all that I have this evening. We won't be back until December. So, you know, happy holidays, if you celebrate Thanksgiving or not. Veterans Day is coming up, and thank you to those who have served. And have a good night.
Thank you, CVP. Thank you, everyone, for being present tonight. So first, I want to give, send prayers out to the young man's family who did lose his life. And to what Councilwoman Vice President just said, my comments were gonna be more so along the lines of, I didn't know it was an illegal establishment. However, I do know that we need to get better at holding these owners accountable when something like that does happen in their establishment. So hopefully, that's being investigated and maybe some accountability will be occurring with the person who actually hosted the event. To, I want to also send best wishes to Mr. Kay, as stated, and Director Bridges on not feeling well this evening. To the Tyson family, I am excited that you all were able to keep your home also in the family. You know, we all, we're all pushing in different areas. And I want to say kudos. I know Frisbee took the lead and the ad hoc committee and the, you know, we all did our part. Administration, thank you so much for helping this family keep it together. That's what it's supposed to be about. To Mr. Baya, I am extremely saddened to hear that that house was awarded. I know I've been receiving many emails from you in regards to this property. And to my knowledge, that was supposed to be the process. So I am confused as to how it ended up being, you know, like a bidding war, which that was the whole purpose of us not doing, the whole purpose of us doing the rehabilitated so that we wouldn't have a bidding war within different residents of the city. So I am disappointed in that. I know this evening, before the meeting got started, I did speak to our redevelopment attorney and asked him if he would help guide in some of the process moving forward with these properties so that we can have a clear process for everyone across the board. To Director Wilson and Director Harris, as far as Election Day and the, and the quick response to the bomb threats, we just want to say thank you for your efforts. I know Director Harris also was able to pivot and open up another facility if we needed to get those polling locations at another place. So thank you for your due diligence, as well as the clerk staff for all of their hard work in a long day of an election cycle. Also, congratulations on a successful Fall Festival event from the city of Trenton and also from the police department with their Halloween events. Everything was, it was all positive feedback. So that's what it's about, is providing different opportunities for our residents and children to have a good time in a safe environment. I think that's it. Happy Veterans Day, happy holiday to everyone, since we won't see you until December. And then I also want to just shout out my cheer team, Trenton Central High School Cheers Team, who will be competing this weekend in the CBC competition. Thank you all for being present. And Mr. Harris, I'm gonna give some of my time to Mr. Harris.
Thank you very much. I forgot one thing. I'd like to thank Mercer Street Friends. They were giving a food distribution at the Pavilion at Catwater Park today between, was it 12:00 and noon? Hopefully soon, the federal government will get the budget done so people can get their SNAP benefits. It would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, a shout out to everybody that's helping out with those who are, don't have their SNAP benefits. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. May we have a motion to adjourn.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams? Council President Gonzalez?
We are under eight o'clock, yes.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.